Meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. And I would ask you all, I have a flag behind me, if you would say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So this is another meeting that we're holding by video conference via Zoom. And the instructions for anyone in the audience that wishes to participate has been printed on the agenda. This format will meet any other requirements of the Missouri Sunshine Law and also the specific ordinance that's been adopted by the City of Harrisonville for emergency meetings being held by video. So we'll begin with roll call, please.
Alderman Zering.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Miller. Alderman Miller. Okay. Alderman Turner. Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
And Mayor Bowman.
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. And I'm going to ask Jeremy Smith, who's here in the room with me, to just give us any pointers that you'd like to share with the board before we start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would just like to remind everyone that if you're not speaking, to go ahead and mute yourself to try to eliminate the background noise as much as possible. Um, and then before you speak, go ahead and unmute yourself and try not to talk over each other if multiple people need to talk at any one time. Um, if for some reason you're having trouble getting either connected or um needing some sort of attention that you maybe need to be recognized, there's also the raise hand function um that you can utilize out of the Zoom um meetings. So depending on your device, there's a couple of different ways that you can raise your hand. There's also a chat and you can chat any questions you might have regarding the meeting. Um, you can send those to me and I'll do my best to get the mayor's attention if she needs to recognize someone and then I can also unmute you. If for some reason we were to have um someone Zoom bomb us, um because this is a public meeting, um I would do my best to institute some security controls so that they couldn't um kind of wreck the meeting for us. Um, at that point, I would probably mute everyone. We'd take a second to try to, you know, regain control of things and continue on with our business. Um, you know, hopefully we wouldn't re- um take any sort of messages or any sort of images that would have us close the meeting. Um, but if we were to have to do that, we would then reach back out to everyone. We'd start a new um Zoom meeting and uh we would. So if anyone has any questions, feel free to chat, um message and uh have a good meeting.
Thank you, Jeremy. Alderman Dickerson, can you mute your phone? I hear you breathing. I'm glad, I'm glad that you're breathing, however. All right, well, we have no ceremonial matters.
I'm not sure I know how to do that.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any ceremonial matters this evening. And uh public participation, Mr. Ratliff, did we have any agenda request forms submitted by the public?
No, ma'am, they were non-submitted.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. And as I mentioned before we began the meeting, everything that we vote on tonight will be done by roll call vote. I was advised that when you do a video meeting like this, it's best not to rely on a voice vote. So everything that we do, um the city clerk will be recording as a roll call vote. So we'll begin with the approval of the minutes. These are the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen from April 6th.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Milner to approve the minutes of the Board of Aldermen, the regular meeting of April 6th. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Davidson. Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zering.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
And Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items, Council Bill 19.
Council Bill 19 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri to suspend enforcement of those portions of the Chapter 600 of the City Code in any manner inconsistent with the government's proclamation, governor's proclamation, for so long as the proclamation is in effect.
Counselor, would you explain this to the board?
Happy to. Just last week, the governor uh announced a new uh rule under COVID which essentially allows uh bars and restaurants to sell mixed drinks in to-go cups. I call them curbside cocktails. And the governor is going to allow it by, by his new regulations. Our code may or may not, depending on how you interpret it, may or may not allow it. But in order to avoid any ambiguity, we're going to change and suspend the enforcement so long as this proclamation is in effect. That way, the enforcement of city code is consistent with state law. But as soon as the proclamation is done, curbside cocktails will not be allowed in Harrisonville anymore. So this proclamation simply clarifies that it's going to happen in Harrisonville only because the governor says so. But once that's done, it's not going to be lawful anymore. And I drafted this after consultation with Chief Holfer and I don't know if he has anything that he wants to weigh in on that, but that was the reason for the proposed resolution.
Thank you, Counselor. Chief Holfer, do you have anything to add?
Uh, I was just going to say it's, it's, my concern isn't upfront with what's uh, how we're going to handle it. It's when this ends and how we're going to deal with it once it ends. Uh, with Mr. Mauer's uh interpretation here, I agree with it and I think this does put some closure to it when this, when we finally start getting away from this COVID-19 stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions of the board for either Counselor or Chief Holfer?
Will it automatically end at the suspension from the governor?
That was the intention, Councilmember. The um, the idea is that so long as the proclamation is in effect, but by this resolution, as soon as the proclamation either expires under its own terms or the governor changes it, revokes it, then it'll go away and we'll be able to enforce our code as written and as always previously.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
And will we, Judy, will we send letters to all the restaurants that that would affect, notifying them exactly of, of the plan and when this goes off then? So therefore, there can be no questions about, nobody told me I couldn't do that after the fact?
Let's ask Mr. Ratliff that question because I know liquor licenses are being renewed now. So that's kind of at the forefront of our mind of our staff. So let's find out if, uh, from Mr. Ratliff.
Yes, we, once this is approved by the board, we will, we will send this out to them uh to make sure that they understand that the board has temporarily approved this. The uh governor takes that uh off, that it would be considered no longer valid for them to do.
Does that answer your question, Alderwoman Milner?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the board?
I do. Mine's probably more directed uh for Chief Holfer. Isn't Missouri a uh? You're not allowed an open container in your car? How does this affect that law?
Can you repeat your question, sir?
Isn't Missouri, you know, it's illegal in Missouri to have an open container in your car?
It is uh illegal to have an open container. What this uh resolution is doing is, is allowing it because the state is not allowing it. Um, but it's still, according to the guidelines set out by the governor, you still have to shut off somewhat of a sealed container. So you can't drive around drinking it. Uh, you have to purchase food and it still needs to be in a newly sealed container.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion and we move from second to 19.
Thank you. I have a, a first from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Zering. Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
And Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
That resolution is approved and becomes um Resolution 012. The Cedarhurst Public Hearing, is that you, Mr. Crowe? Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, ma'am, as the board is uh aware of presentations ever done previously, uh this here tonight that you're considering is the uh Chapter 100 uh for the Cedarhurst of Harrisonville. Uh, the uh, we have with us tonight uh Tina Sharville with Dover Development. Uh, she will go over and discuss this, his project and the reason for the request. And then after her, uh Dave Martin, which is the bond counsel, will give uh information on that and then Joey McClain.
All right, everyone, that was exactly what we didn't want to happen. Um, so now I have muted everyone and no one can unmute themselves. So at this point, I'm going to remove as many people from the meeting as I can and then each person will have to be called upon and I will unmute them selectively. Unfortunately, that's one of the negative things that happens when you have to publish the link. So let me unmute Brad and let's move on.
It may be just me. So as I was saying before uh the uh music started, we, this is over the Chapter 100 uh for the Cedarhurst of Harrisonville. Uh, this is, I, we have with us tonight Tina Sharville, who will explain um the project as well as the reason for the request. Uh, Dave Martin with, Gilmore and Bell is the bond counsel on this. And then Joey McClain will summarize the cost benefit analysis. So with that, um if Jeremy can unmute me and, or mute me and unmute Ms. Sharville.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you uh so much, Brad. I appreciate everyone's time this evening. Um, just to reiterate, Cedarhurst of Harrisonville is proposing a 73-unit assisted living and memory care community right next to Cass Regional Hospital on Rock Haven Road. And as we've been going through our due diligence on this site, we've uh run into some unanticipated site costs, namely our, our soils and, and the rock that's on the site are going to require some over excavation and bringing in some fill material, which originally we weren't anticipating. In addition to that, we also um ran into some environmental remediation. We'll need to remove some blight on the property, which led to the cost. We discovered that there was a storm sewer running across the property not picked up in our original survey, so that will need to be relocated. And then we have some unanticipated infrastructure costs that we've been working uh very closely with the city on. We, we certainly appreciate the uh, the resolution we've come to in, in allowing us to do those, or allowing the city to do those and then reimbursing at cost instead of the, the traditional fees that are, that are associated with, with some of the utilities. So in addition to that, we also, just from a market rate perspective, creating a little bit of uncertainty for us is that we don't have a product like this in Harrisonville at the moment. The closest thing we are going to be looking at will be in, in Belton and Raymore. And um we're, we're confident that we can get those rates, but since we are a little bit further out from the, the Kansas City metro area, there's just a little bit of uncertainty. So, so any help we can get would be appreciated, especially with this tax abatement. And, and looking through the, the documents, I, I think it's mutually beneficial. We're certainly improving the property from what it is today and, you know, we're, we're generating an increased revenue from a tax perspective. But then we're also appreciative of the, the uh abatement from our side, which will help with our operating cost and our initial construction cost as well. So that's all I have for now and I appreciate the consideration.
Good evening, everyone. This is David Martin with Gilmore and Bell, um serving as bond counsel to the city on this transaction. And wanted to explain just a bit of background on how Chapter 100 works and provides the incentive that's been requested and a little bit of information about how that's achieved. So the basics of a Chapter 100 transaction lie in municipal ownership of the property and the improvements that are made on the property. So the transaction starts with a private company uh dealing its property to the city and the city having fee ownership of that property for the duration of the Chapter 100 abatement. Since the city has no desire or ability to operate these types of private improvements, the property is immediately leased back to the private company for them to operate on that property and construct the project. There's some important provisions that are built into that lease, um one being an indemnity provision that says if any losses are created on the property and the city were to be named as property owner in a lawsuit, that the company would indemnify and defend the city and prevent the city from taking any losses in that circumstance. Additionally, insurance is required, both property and general liability insurance, which protects the city's interest in those similar circumstances. In order to take the benefit of Chapter 100, you have to additionally fund the project through Chapter 100 bonds, which are issued by the city. The request in this circumstance is for uh 10 million, I think it's $850,000 worth of Chapter 100 bonds to be issued by the city. In this circumstance, they will be purchased by the company as opposed to an individual third-party investor. And I'll get into in a second the significance of that. Um, but the most significant item with respect to the bonds is they are not a liability of the city outside of the lease payments made by the company. So the company agrees to pay the principal and interest on the bonds under the lease agreement and there is no other recourse against the city in case of a non-payment. In this particular circumstance where the company's buying its own bonds, the bond liability is owed to the company itself. So there really is not a circumstance in which there could be a default with respect to the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds. The uh transaction that I just discussed has the effect of taking the property and the improvements completely off of the tax rolls and also gives the city the ability to provide its sales tax exemption certificate, which means that construction materials purchased with bond proceeds are exempt from sales tax completely. Now, in this circumstance, we're dealing with a 50% abatement over a 20-year period. So in order to accomplish that 50% abatement, the company will agree in a performance agreement that it will pay an amount equal to 50% of the taxes that would otherwise be due on the project, starting when the project is complete. That's pretty much a summary of the transaction. The main transaction documents that are in front of you tonight are uh bond ordinance, which authorizes the issuance of the bonds and it authorizes a trust indenture with a bond trustee that basically sets out the term of the bonds, duration, interest rate, and so forth, and that the city will be the issuer of the bonds. The lease agreement, as I described, contains a number of provisions between the company and the city about how the company will operate and construct the project. The performance agreement primarily is in place to set the calculation and percentage of the payments in lieu of tax that will be made. And the bond purchase agreement states the conditions under which the company will purchase the bonds from the city. With respect to the rest of the hearing, after Joey's presentation with respect to some of the economics of the transaction, all that would be legally required would be to be able to recognize, maybe by raise of hand, if there were any representatives of a taxing jurisdiction on the Zoom meeting and allow them to speak whether for or in opposition to the project. If anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
And any questions of Mr. Martin? Anyone have questions for Mr. Martin? Okay, we'll move on to Joey. Mr. McClain?
Beginning on page 29 of your board packet is a cost benefit analysis that we prepared for, for this project. Really what this comes down to is what's the benefit to the city, to the jurisdictions um versus what is, uh, what are they giving up? It's a pretty straightforward analysis without any, uh, without any improvements. You have a blighted area and over the next 20 years, you're going to collect roughly $458,000. With the improvement, you will clean up and greatly improve the property and will collect twice that, uh roughly uh 1,023,421 dollars will be collected. And uh every jurisdiction has an improved collection over what they would if nothing was done. And that's really the, the long and the short of the process. You, you, you're doubling the amount you normally would have collected had nothing happened and you've improved the location. Any questions for me?
You going to unmute me?
You're unmuted.
Okay.
You're still muted.
Okay, you're good.
Oh, thank you. Uh, any other questions for Mr. McClain? We'll, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing then. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against um the project?
You have to repeat that. You're unmuted.
Council Bill 18 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds for Cedarhurst Harrisonville Project. First year Council Bill 018.
Discussion from the board.
Just so everyone knows, there, you have to either use the raise your hand or you're going to have to wave to me to let me know that you want to speak because there's no way, once I lock down the mute, that you can unmute yourselves. So if you want to let me know if you need to say anything, I'd appreciate it.
I'm just excited about the, the idea of Cedarhurst coming. I mean, my mother's in a facility like this in uh Raymore and I would love to have had her here, but you know, she's there and it is a private paid facility, just like this one will be. So um I, I think it's going to be a good thing for, for our community and for our citizens.
Thank you, Alderman. I would echo that. Um, Tina and her staff have been a delight to work with. We've gotten to know her over these past few months. We're looking forward to seeing Cedarhurst out there on Highway 49 right next to Cass Regional Medical Center, so. Well, if there are no further questions from the board, I'd entertain a motion. This is an ordinance.
I make a motion.
Second.
What is your motion, Alderman?
Um, do we need to move this to second reading tonight? Yeah. I make a motion to move this to second reading this evening.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule and advance Council Bill 18 to its second reading. Roll call.
Alderman Zering.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
And Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading. Thank you. Second reading.
Uh, second Council Bill 018, or 018 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds for Cedarhurst Harrisonville Project. Second Council Bill 018.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Zering.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff. Alderman Reese.
Aye.
And Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 18 is approved. I apologize, Alderman. I apologize. Uh, Council Bill 18 is approved and becomes ordinance number 3492. Welcome to Harrisonville, Tina.
Thank you so much. I certainly appreciate everything that, that you guys have done and we are, we are just certainly looking forward to getting through permitting and breaking ground as soon as possible.
Excellent. Thank you again.
Everybody have a good night.
You too. Alderman in committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff.
I've got nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Zering.
I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Alderman Reese.
Uh, nothing now, thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Milner.
Um, the only thing I had and, and I had um emailed or messaged Judy earlier in the week, I had a, a question about the cases of COVID in Harrisonville directly and were they all related to the same Meadowview Nursing Home? So I didn't know if anybody else had had that same question, but Judy had, had mentioned that, that I believe that was the case.
Okay, thank you. Um, I can give you a report. As of 4 o'clock this afternoon, there are, have been 54 cases in Cass County. 22 of those have been in Harrisonville and 20 of the 22 are associated with Meadowview Nursing Home. Of those 20, of those 54 cases, there have been six deaths. And we're just getting updates every day. Um, I'm in conversation with um the Cass County Health Department and mayors and commissioners across Cass County. That's about all I know at this point. Does that help you, Alderman Milner? Okay. Moving on with Alderman and committee reports then, Alderman Dickerson?
Uh, yes, I'd like to ask, uh, I guess the city attorney, is there any way that the restaurants in Harrisonville would be allowed to uh? in Harrisonville would be allowed to, I guess, there's a city in, a restaurant in Kansas City that sued the city to reopen and, but they have to follow the distancing. Is there any way we could do that in Harrisonville to allow them to open, use their capacity that they get from the fire department, cut it in half and let them open some of their dining rooms, or is that an impossibility?
I've not heard of whatever restaurant that is, Alderman. I'll have to investigate, but the, it's really not our decision. It was a decision that by proclamation by the governor and then also by the Cass County. And so it's not like we have the ability on our own, perhaps since, you know, in Kansas City, Mayor Lucas was out in front, maybe they, you know, they're trying to reverse his proclamation, but I don't know how they get around the governor's proclamation that says they can't do it. So I'll have to investigate, but I'm not familiar with any restaurant that's been able to reopen and actually have in, in-room dining.
Yeah, it was a Waldo bar. I don't know if it's a Waldo bar or which one. It was one down there somewhere.
I will pick one up.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Alderman Dickerson, I can address that. There is, you know, all of Cass County is working together on the COVID-19 issue. All of the mayors, the commissioners, the health departments, the emergency managers. It's a huge effort trying to address, you know, how we're going to protect our people and yet move our state forward. And in the case of Cass County, it's how are we going to protect Cass Countians and yet get business back to work and people, businesses open and people back to work. There's just recently been a tack, a task force created by the Cass County Commission of people, including myself, that are going to be talking about how to incrementally open businesses back up. It's going to be a complex thing and we have to do it in conjunction with the governor. And as you know, the governor's proclamation is that businesses will not be open at least until May the 3rd. He has said he's going to look at that again and he'll make the decision whether or not he will extend that. So there are conversations happening and it's not up to anyone, as counselor said, it's not up to any one city to make any kind of a mandate for that. It has to be a countywide thing in conjunction with the state governor's proclamation. So I hope that helps you.
Yeah, it does. Well, I've been contacted by some restaurant owners and they were asking this question, so I posed it to the board to find out. So now I have something to tell them.
Perfect, yes. And, you know, we're all being contacted by businesses because businesses need to get reopened and people need to get back to work. So thank you all for your patience in talking to people. I know we've all had lots of conversations. Alderman Milner, Miller, sorry.
The only comment I got is, "Good job, Jeremy. This has been much, much better than two weeks ago."
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
Our last planning zoning meeting, we had the preliminary plat and the final plat for Valley Hill, which is the Hydro-Pipe Farm. Looks like that's going to get rolling now. That's on Brookheart, just north of Sap Brothers. So glad to see them get that replotted and on the merge. We approved especially for Cedarhurst, of course, that's not old. And we had a public hearing, rezone some duplexes over on Limburg Street. They've been vacant for several years and been kind of rundown. I saw, they've been purchased. Zoning was a little messed up. We got it straightened out. They're going to redo it and have some nice duplexes there, spruce up the area and the neighborhood, so should get, look good through that area and that was it.
Thank you. Alderman Turner and I are both on planning and zoning and it was really exciting to hear about that area down there being cleaned up. John Coffey is going to build a couple of duplexes down there and John does quality work, so I'm looking forward to having the area cleaned up. Alderman Davidson.
The only thing is, have we got any indication on when we might have the meeting reference to flooding? I know that we were going to look at three dates in May. Has there been any updates on that in regards to not knowing obviously when there may be a lift as far as the stay-at-home orders, but?
I think we're looking at later, the later dates in May or early June at this point. Mr. Ratliff, do you have any updates?
Yes, that's correct. The, more than likely it'll be in June is the dates that we're trying to get that set up for. So with that, I'll go into, on the city administrative report, some good news is that we have finalized the bidding with the health insurance and we are going to be moving to United Healthcare. Just a, a highlight version for the board. The coverages for the employees will be improved, basically from even better than what they had the year before last as far as coverage-wise and also as far as out-of-pocket cost. The other good side of it as well is the city will be saving about $32,000 annually a year that we had budgeted. So it was a win-win. The employees will see a much-needed improvement on the benefit side of it and the city will save in cost of it. And people say, "How do you do that?" And it's Economics 101, competition. And the result of that has been very good. And so we'll be rolling out those to the employees and, and the information on that around the first of May. That information will go out to the employees as well as additional benefits that go along with that, which is even a component for the, all the employees of a telehealth component that they'll be able to utilize at no cost to them at all. And so it's a really, really good benefit and, and we're thankful Stafford and Stafford as our broker there helped broker that and we appreciate that. With that, we also are moving toward the finalization on the property liability and Ripman's Comp. And right now we're looking at over $110,000 in savings on that as well. And our coverages will be increased on many of those things since, I will give a credit to our, the best IT guy in Cass County that everybody seemed to know, working on all this. But the, even the coverages are, are being doubled on IT type of cyber crimes that are going in that as well. So we're, we're thankful to, that that competition, Stafford and Stafford as well. It looks like when we finalize that, we'll be able to announce the, the company, but that's what we're, we're looking at, at this time and probably tomorrow we'll be finalizing that as well. So we're, we're happy about that. And with that, we're going to be able to institute the pre-employment testing for new hires that's currently not being, being done and we'll be able to do that when, and the department heads will be working with us on those requirements for the pre-testing as well as incidents within-house. One of the abilities is through one of the companies that's actually more local to our employees here in Cass County. So with that, to go into that component, that savings, you're looking around at least $132,000, $142,000 savings that the city is going to see as a component of that. And as, as a result of that, we're also going to be able to see that our improvement and coverages and, and benefits will be from that. So the other part of that discussion is, I'm sure a lot of you have seen on, on television for the president announcing a lot of the different federal funds during this COVID-19 and a lot of the, the problems that are out there, especially for our small businesses. Harrisonville, as you all know, is very heavily relied on sales tax and our small businesses are, are, are engine here in Harrisonville. And so with that discussion, I know we've had in times past, the ED position that was planned to be mid-year and unless the board really has huge objections, I really think we need to get someone on quickly to look at, we've got the SBA loans opportunity for companies up to $2 million and an additional $10 million for pay tech, paycheck protection. $150 billion coming into, available for states and local governments as well as CDBG funds have been increased to $2 billion over long-term for economic development as well as in the ED administration, another $1.5 billion. USDA is coming out with an additional 4.48.9 billion in broadband for rural areas. So there's a lot of the primary market corporation for credit facility block grants. There's another $150 billion for that. We need someone here at the city to work with the businesses that we have now to try to help them save their business as a result of this happening. And what it does for the city is, number one, we are being advocates for our, our local businesses and trying to help them get through the red tape and making sure they know all the programs that are there. But at the same time, if they do well, the city does well because that's a connection to our revenues as well. And so unless there's any major objection by the board, I'd like to get that started so that, you know, it takes a while to get someone in to that position and, and really that focus point of that ED person is going to be, number one priority is try to help save the businesses that we have here in, in Harrisonville right now, helping them navigate through the state programs. And that will give, I think, good opportunity with the savings that we're seeing on the, the health side, that is something I know some of the Alderman were concerned about, wanted to make sure that we got past that first. And so unless any major objections to that, I'll try to start moving forward with that and trying to get that accomplished. I gave you another thing you can talk about too, before Jeremy opens up the mic so that you can tell me you don't like this either. The, the other point, it would be, I know some of you, or I think the majority of you got a email from Mr. Strack about the appeal on the city engineer decision on, and with that, I looked at the paragraph that was cited in there and I'm not a lawyer, but I can read pretty good. And it was very, to me, confusing because at one point it says supervisor, next point it says Board of Aldermen, next point it says Public Works Committee. And so it was really confusing to follow. I did talk to the, to the attorney, Mr. Maurer, who, when I first sent it to him, he said this is a very confusing ordinance. And I said, "Well, good, I'm not the only one." And so it really doesn't behoove a governing body to be reviewing a, a city engineer decision. It really should stay on that professional level and, and really being determined by the facts and, and the actual policies rather than any political that would be involved with that. And so unless the board has a major objection with that, I'll move forward with his appeal that it would be to the supervisor of the city engineer, which would be the Public Works Director. And with that, we'll bring forward an ordinance that clarifies that chapter. That would be if someone wanted to appeal the city engineer's decision, it would then be handled by the Public Works Director. If in the future, the city engineer is also the Public Works Director, then that decision can be appealed to the city administrator. And we'll bring that to you all to vote on at the next meeting. I will move forward with that same type of, of clear language, but a clear process with Mr. Strack as well as that being reviewed by the Public Works Director. And so with that, with those two things, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. And if the board has any major objections with any of those two things, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions of the board to Mr. Ratliff?
Well, I will say, Brad, I, I like the idea. I, I just want to make sure, I think Clint, you were the, I think we were concerned, you were concerned timeframe-wise with the, with a July date, not knowing what our insurance was going to be, but I like the idea that if we could get a Economic Development Director in here and help the businesses move forward with the loans, that would sure be, that would sure, I, I would think it would just make everybody feel a lot better knowing that somebody has a central job and knows what they're doing and not giving misdirection as to where to go and how to do.
And that's, and that's the hope that we would be able to provide that because, you know, there is so much that's being thrown into all these programs and I know that a lot of times there's a lot of red tape, right? And we really need somebody that specializes in those type of issues. And I know that it was brought up about some of the Alderman concerned about that. So I, I felt with at least the health insurance issue, and the insurance issue being settled, that it would be more palatable for the board to move forward with that. And I know we're going to, next month, I know some have asked about where we're at as far as the city and the revenues. We know that our revenues are going to get hit through this process as well. And I've talked to the mayor and we'll bring by the next meeting for a work session, kind of an overview for the board to be able to review because we really don't know and as time goes along, we'll, we'll know a little better. Right now, the entire city as far as capital projects and major purchases has been halted until we have a clear understanding what the impact is.
Thank you. Who's, who's speaking?
I think the sooner we can, you know, developer in, and I think this is probably the perfect time to find somebody good that can move forward with that, especially to help navigate our small businesses through, like Mr. Ratliff was saying, through all the red tape. Because I know, you know, the lot, you hear a lot of, you know, the administration calls all this money and all these people have all this money, but it's been my experience in the past that the red tape involved with getting access to that money in a quick manner, I mean, a lot of small businesses would go under by the time they even receive the help that they need. So I guess, I mean, I totally agree with that. I, I would be excited if we could get an economic developer, especially with, you know, once we get through all the COVID-19 quarantine and all of that stuff, for the city to move forward, I think that's going to be a critical part of it. Couple of quick questions for one, and then I'll mute myself off. How long would it take to find, without rushing, but to find a, you know, the right person for that position? How long before that position and be, you know, hitting the ground running? And then two would be, is there something more that we can be doing as a city? Because like you said, small businesses, which I agree, are the engine of this city. Is there something more that we could be doing to help our small business owners through these, this process of, they need to get a loan from the, you know, from whatever money fund that's out there for them to do that? Is there something more that we can be doing, like immediately, like right now that we could be doing, should be doing or, or whatever on that there? And, and I'll shut up now and mute myself. Thank you.
Yeah, we've, one is, it, it could take about a, a month to get somebody on board. But, you know, once you find someone quickly and then, yeah, then putting in their notices. So I, I would see it would take at least a month at the quickest to get somebody in here. And as far as what we're doing now, the mayor even sent out an email today, a different... And as far as what we're doing now, the mayor even sent out an email today of different opportunities through the loans and any of the aldermen want to reach out with that information to any business that they are being approached by. We also have been working, I know Daniel has done a great job about sending out that information to social media as well as getting it, making sure that the chamber has that information as well as Love the Square, that we can be able to make sure that we're coordinating and make, and understanding that those opportunities are there. Even last week, there was a conference call that you could get on and, and have a ability to hear different programs that were out there. And we made sure that the chamber president was well aware of that and they got on that call as well because I know a lot of the businesses are communicating through the chamber as well. So we're doing everything we can as far as sending out all that information. Daniel's done a great job of, of sending that information. The mayor gets several correspondences that she's been sending to the businesses as well. But as you said in, in your statement, Alderman Zaring, is a lot of it is, a lot of these small businesses having the wherewithal to be able to how to navigate through a lot of that red tape. And a lot of them, you know, they're fighting for survival. So to say that they've got additional things they got to do, sometimes I think overwhelms them. And so I think if we could get somebody that understands those programs really well because they've already worked in those programs, but now they're, you know, being enhanced like the Incredible Hook with the amount of money that they're being advanced with, that can maybe help them get to those funds quickly, then that would be much better in the long-term, I, I feel, for those businesses. Because a lot of times of most businesses that are in communities, they always feel like economic development is only about getting new business. Well, economic development is a, is a quality of life issue for your community. And it's about not just going after any new business, but it's about retaining the businesses that you have while communicating with the businesses that are here and holistically working together as a whole group from the chamber to the Love the Square, to the city and everybody working together for the enrichment. Because usually the, the quality of the community is the people that work in it and live in it. And so we want to make sure that Harrisonville is not only a place to live, but also a good place to work and has those opportunities of quality of life. So I look at economic development maybe different than some people do. It's not to me just about new business, but it's also about helping the existing businesses, whether they expand or, add in this situation, survive an outbreak of this manner. So I hope that answers your question.
Madam Mayor, if I can continue, please? In this past week, I had several conversations with several small business owners in the city. And one of them specifically brought it up, and I didn't even know that this was going to be discussed tonight, brought up the question of where the city was if we were going to actually hire an economic development director. And their comment was, was because of just exactly what was stated earlier was the fact that they needed help in navigating through all this. And this isn't over yet. I know the first $349,000 is out, but there's going to be more out there and there's going to be more help that's going to be needed depending on how long this lasts. And so I, for one, would like to see us go ahead and continue specifically because I think it's, it's, it's badly needed for our small businesses in the town.
Any other comments from the board before we move on?
Mayor Volman, did you catch my comment I made shortly a little bit ago?
I'm sorry, we didn't. Could you repeat it?
I said, "I am fine with moving forward with an economic developer at this time."
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Milner has a question?
Is this something that as a board we need to go ahead and vote on tonight to move forward with or is this something we don't have to have a vote for, but Brad can go ahead and move forward with?
I think it's just the consensus of the board that Brad can proceed, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Questions from the media? Is Dennis on here?
He was.
I don't.
I see.
Have your stuff muted?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, and we can see you too.
Okay. Really, I only had one thing and that was before the meeting started, you made some comments about the citywide garage sale. And I thought we probably ought to go ahead and go on the record with that so that we can help get the word out.
I think that's a very good idea, Dennis, and you can be very helpful in us doing that. You know, in the past, the city and the chamber and the Democrat Missourian all kind of sponsored together the citywide garage sale and it's been that way for years. That ended when the Democrat Missourian left Harrisonville. And the citywide garage sale just kind of miraculously happens the first Saturday of every May. People just kind of expect it and start saving up all their stuff for that particular day. I don't think that any city garage, citywide garage sales need to happen in the month of May. The Health Department is going to come out with, in conjunction with supporting the governor's stay-at-home order, they're probably going to come out with a directive about large gatherings and, and coming out with something to mandate that large gatherings don't take place right now. That would be things like garage sales. So I think it's going to be helpful for the protection of our citizens to postpone any type of citywide garage sale until perhaps later in the summer. And we can kind of see where the governor goes with his stay-at-home order and what the situation looks like as far as the progress of the coronavirus. Does that help you, Dennis?
I think that tells me what I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Well, I've got just a couple of comments about the COVID-19 situation. You know, I've been mentioning that the county is working together and I think that is a wonderful thing because we have to have a consistent message to our people. People have to know when they go from one city to another, you know, if that city is open or if that city is not. And the message that I try to disseminate to everybody that I speak to, and I would ask the board to do the same thing, is even once the stay-at-home order is lifted, we are still going to have to follow the precautions of the CDC for a long time. Life is different right now. And even after our businesses are open and things are back to the new normal, we're still going to have to be practicing social distancing and frequent hand washing and watching how we cover our mouths when we're around a large group of people. We, this virus is brand new. We don't know anything much about it and we have no immunity to it and we have no vaccine available for it. So we have to be very careful. You know, we want to get our businesses back open, we want to get families back out, but we've got to be very cautious that we don't have some type of a second wave of this virus. So it's just a, it's just a different unprecedented time. And I would just thank you for the conversations that I know that you're having with your constituents. And I would just say to any of our constituents out there, you know, if you, if you have a question, reach out to your alderman or reach out to me or reach out to city staff. We're here to serve you and together we're going to make it through this. We are Harrisonville and we've been through some rough things and we've always come out on the other side. So I know that we will on this time too. So thank you. And if I ever said it before, I would say, "God bless Harrisonville." Motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to adjourn. Roll call, please. Alderman Zering?
Aye.
Alderman Reese? Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff? Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dick, Dickerson?
Aye.
Is that everyone? I think so. Thank you, we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.